Stand.
I pledge the lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, board members and members of the audience. Board members, if you have an agenda before you, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on our agenda? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We now have an agenda. Next item on the report is the superintendent's recommendations and announcements. Reports, recommendations, and announcements, and the first one is our budget. And I'm going to this time turn it over to Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just give me one second to get the agenda up here. So, before you begin your deliberations this evening, that is, it is a workshop meeting on the budget for 2013, 2014. I'd like to take just a few minutes to review the path we've been down to get to this point that we're at this evening. And on the screen, you see a slide that I'm going to talk about. And you also have, I believe, at the dice, a hard copy of that. And it has been uploaded into your board docs as well. Our budget has truly been an ongoing process this year. I think we've talked about it at least at one of our monthly meetings every single month since probably September. And, you know, that's a good thing in a lot of ways because it means we've been very forward-thinking and proactive in what the issues we may be facing would be. And finally, at your February 5th, 2013 meeting, the school board approved an initial budget request for us to take to the board of supervisors. And a summary of that initial budget request that you approved is found on line one of that handout. So you'll see on that line one that you made a request of $96,178,314. And that the funds available that we knew of at that moment were just $92,617,997, which left a gap, and it's in your far right column on that piece of paper, in parenthesis showing that it's a negative. It left a gap when we started this process of $3,560,317. And so, we moved on. And the legislator, legislators vetted and debated their budget. And the governor, you know, did his thing to try to convince them to do some things. And also, the lobbyists for the various school systems were there trying to work the legislature to provide additional funds for education. At the same time that process was going on, our own board of supervisors was very actively engaged in developing their budget for 2013, 2014. They held community meetings, they held a workshop session, as did you. And we got to line two on April the 16th. On line two, the line shows you that the request from the school board for our needs-based budget remained at $96,178,314. In other words, our needs were exactly what we had presented initially. You'll see under funds available that that amount of money has increased. And it increased through the actions of the two legislative bodies of the state and of the board of supervisors. And in the instance of Montgomery County, it was largely through the actions of our board of supervisors. And they put just over $2.2 million in additional revenue into our budget. But, we still have the gap. And if you look over to the right, you'll see that as we started that meeting on April the 16th, knowing how much state and how much local money we had, we still had a gap of $1,490,127. At that meeting on April 16th, and I'm moving you now down to line three. At that meeting on April 16th, I started to have a conversation with the board about some ways in which we might, could adjust our request to reduce the gap that we had between available funds and actual needs. And during that discussion, I identified some very specific things. And you'll see on line three where it says superintendent's proposed, that the number I proposed that evening was $95,761,421. And I got to that point by doing or making several recommendations to the board. And the recommendations that I made that evening were that we reduce the amount of money that we put in restoring instructional supplies to the schools, that we reduce the amount of increase we'd placed in field trips, and that we reduce the number of buses that we were going to purchase from four to one. And that's how I got to that $95 million number instead of the $96 million number that we'd been working with. The board reacted to the issue that we faced in terms of our gap by directing me to write a letter to the board of supervisors on your behalf requesting that the supervisors can consider providing $575,000 additional funds to Montgomery County Public Schools through the one-time revenue that would be generated potentially with the two cents tax increase during the month of June. I took that step immediately. The letter was hand-delivered to the county manager's office on the next day. And the supervisors acted very quickly on that request. They placed it on their agenda for Monday, April 22nd. And, the outcome was positive. So, line four provides a summary of where we are following their action on this past Monday evening when they restored $575,000 to Montgomery County Schools' budget. And I want to take just a minute to walk through it because we've had so many different renditions and the income has, the funds available have increased and needs have changed in some respects. So I'm going to talk just a second about that line. You'll notice on line four that the superintendent's proposed budget is $94,776,821. And the reason that number is smaller than the number that you've seen before is that I went ahead and absorbed the things that the board has agreed to do that would no longer require you expend those funds. So basically, there are three things in there. There's the $53,000 that represented a change in a leadership position from a 1.0 to a .8. It was $53,000. There's $25,000 of cost savings that we believe that we have in the summer academy, still run the summer academy, still do an effective job, but we found a way to save, we think, $75,000. And it includes the cost avoidance that's based on a decision that the board made back in, let's see, when we made that, on February 19th with the change in how we schedule our middle schools. And so, the cost avoidance is just over $900,000. So if you add those three items together, you now have a needs-based budget of $94,776,821. So now, I would draw your attention to line three under funds available and line four under funds available. If you add the $575,000 that the supervisors approved on Monday evening to the $94,688, then you have $95,263,186 available for you to expend on the programs and needs of the district. For the first time, you'll see in the far column that there is a positive number. And that positive number is $486,365. And it comes as a result of two things. It comes as a result of the decisions that you've made for cost avoidance and for a couple of cuts. And it comes from the addition of the $575,000 that the supervisors provided above their previous allocation on Monday evening. So we find ourselves in a situation that I've not been in in my entire tenure in Montgomery County Public Schools. And that is the ability to potentially look at some of the things that we need to do in the district that we have not had funds to do. And potentially to look at the opportunity to even review some of the things that we've had to remove from our school operations with the potential to add them back.
Well, Phyllis and I haven't been here, have been here longer than you, and this is the first time we've seen this also.
Well, it's a much better feeling. But remember now, we have done some things to get us to this point. And they were also decisions that were not easy to make. So I'm going to bring your attention now to slide two of the, which is now up on the board and which you also have a hard copy of. And it has the bottom of the orange sheet, okay? It's the bottom of your orange sheet, the second half. And it starts out there and it shows you what I just went through with you, which was how I got to this new proposed budget request, the $94 million. It takes off the three items that I spoke about in lines five, six, and seven. So I want to draw your attention now to lines eight through 13 at the bottom of the page. In anticipation of the fact that we have potentially the opportunity to make some decisions about $486,000, I worked with staff and I brought you what I would consider my recommendations for your consideration for the use of the $486,000. And they are on line eight, to bring back the supply restoration to the full $300,000. Now, line nine, to put the $4,500 for field trips back in the budget. Line 10, to restore one of the two positions that we had previously reduced from our in-school suspension program in middle schools at a value of $16,000. On line 11, I have recommended your consideration of restoring the full-time athletic directors at BHS and CHS and providing a .5 athletic director at East Montgomery High School and Auburn High School. Each of those positions would carry with it 10 summer days. The positions are not valued at the same thing that they were when they were reduced from your budget. At the time that they were reduced, the athletic directors were essentially working a full 12-month year and were employed throughout the summertime. I've mulled over this one a lot, and I'd like to share with you a little bit of my rationale. And I'd like to also share with you that I don't consider it a failed experiment. I consider it something that we needed to do. If you'll remember, last year, we were sitting here, we were trying to find $4 million that we could take out of our budget. And there was not a single reduction that was made that was not an employee or a program that was needed. But we had to make some hard choices, and this is one of the hard choices that we made. As I looked at these AD AP positions, although I must give the high schools credit, they have done a great job with dealing with less resources. But it's been very, very difficult. And where I have seen the takeaway has been from the ability of the AP to have visibility in classrooms, to do the teacher observations, to have a presence in classrooms, and to provide the teachers when they visit classrooms with meaningful feedback. So in other words, essentially, the high schools lost at least half of an assistant principal. And I spent a little time today looking back at those recommendations that came out of the academic reviews that took place first at CHS and then at East Montgomery High School. And we followed them up with voluntary academic reviews at BHS and Auburn High School to see if we saw the same patterns. And one of the recommendations spoke to the importance of administrative visibility in classrooms and the real value of teachers receiving feedback from the walkthrough observations that are done by administrators. So for that reason, and for the fact that there is really a great emphasis on all of the safety, the concussion, and all of the things that go with the AD position, I felt that it was a priority for recommending to you that they be restored. And keep in mind, they're not being restored exactly like they were before. And I don't, I don't feel that that's a disservice because we now have trained an AP at each school who can certainly step up to the plate during the summer and help with some of the summertime activities that go on in relationship to athletics. So that's line 11, and it's just over $181,000 to do two half-times and two full-times and four times 10 days in the summer, or 40 summer days.
Number 12.
That's number 11. Okay. Now, I'm going to move down to number 12. As you know, mathematics is an issue not only in Montgomery County but across the state. And the standards are tougher, the sequencing is challenging, not only for teachers, but not only for students but also for teachers. And we have really, really focused this year on scope and sequence, on unit planning, on trying to support our teachers. But I'm going to recommend that we add two math coaches for secondary schools. You know that we have two high schools that are accredited-warned based primarily on their math performance, and I'm determined to get them off of that list. Coaching is one of the most powerful tools that you can ever use for improving performance. And that's true whether it's a coach for an adult or a coach for a young person. In the instance of the math coaches, they would work specifically with teachers. High-quality math coaches work directly with teachers on the instructional strategies that they need to incorporate to improve student achievement in mathematics. They do it through actually teaching teachers, having conversations with teachers one-on-one and in department meetings, and through modeling, observation, and feedback right in the classroom with the teacher. The academic review team praised Montgomery County Schools because we have been able to invest some resources in coaching. We have one coach that we share between the two warned high schools. And we have one coach that serves our four middle schools. It's just not enough to do the job that we need to do and to close the gap that we need to do to close in the high schools. By adding the two coaches, I believe that we could provide some additional support for our two accredited-warned high schools, that we could provide some support for the two high schools that are not facing the same level of difficulty. But, the team, the academic review team, saw some of the very same problems in the other two schools. And it would allow us to beef up what we're doing with the middle schools because really, math builds on the skills that the kids learn in all the previous grade levels. And so, it's not going to be enough to put a Band-Aid on high school. We've got to get back and do some things to fill the voids that exist and that are coming with students from the middle school. So, I think that that's, coaching is one of the most powerful ways to support improvement, achievement in mathematics, and it's a priority for me. Finally, on line 13, one of the things that we've struggled to do this year is try to add some support material specifically in math but also in literacy. And we've struggled with the resources to do so. I know at one point Jonathan Schultz, who's our math supervisor, requested that I look for about $53,000 in funds to be able to support some, I guess you would call it remedial, but some additional supplemental materials that we could use in our two high schools that are struggling very, very much so with math. And I was only able to find $15,000. So we did the $15,000 worth, but we really have a real need to look further for some additional support materials to work with students and get them back on track in mathematics. So I recommend we restore $63,665 to the instructional supply budget for the purpose of purchasing additional supplemental materials, probably software more so than written materials. There's a READ 180, and there's also a math 180. And so, we've been looking at that as a resource. And so, I would recommend that we try to beef up the instructional materials that we're providing for our math and literacy at our, our schools. With that, those are my thoughts about budget enhancements, and certainly they reflect the discussion that I had with staff at length. And at this point, I would turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. And at this time, I'm going to open it up to the board members around the dice to, with if anybody has any opening comments and would like to get us kicked off in our discussion.
I don't have a comment, I just have a question. Don't we have reading 180 now at the schools?
Yes, but we don't have math 180.
I know. But my question is, how effective is reading 180?
It's very good. It's excellent, very well-received. In fact, when we did a little video for you all about the six-year plan, maybe 12 or 18 months ago, we had a couple of our middle school students talking about the impact of READ 180.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Don't forgive me, I sound like a frog. One of the questions I had was on the second possible reductions, is it crossed out about the nurses? That was one of my concerns. I think I couldn't.
Those are not on my list of recommendations.
They're not, okay, so that is gone, okay.
The only recommendation I have in relationship to the nurses is the same one that I have for all of the extended-year contracts.
Right.
Is that they be reviewed when they become vacant to see about the necessity of adding all of those days or some portion of those days.
Because I really hope that they understand how much we know how hard they work.
Right.
Because that's, you know, Abby had this, and I know at, at the middle school, that nurse's office was full constantly, all the time. And that's a lot of students for one nurse. So, anyway, I'm glad of that.
On line, on line 11, the part-time, is that 50%?
Yes, it would be a .5.
Thank you.
Are those people identified? Are those, so those would be new hires to the system?
They would be new positions, but it could be an existing employee or it could be a new hire employee. The one thing I need to restate because it's important that you know it is, I can only guarantee this for one year.
Right.
Any of these things. And we could be right back here next year saying the things that we add this evening or that you add when you approve a budget are one-year only. So, the caveat for any hire in these positions would be that it is a one-year-only position.
And that's my biggest concern, is that what we're doing is we're taking the extra funds and putting them into a reoccurring budget line item that we don't know if we're going to be funding next year on. And, you know, the 575 that we received, there was a lot of pain and gnashing of teeth Monday evening about that. And, you know, we're going to go, go back and ask for some security money at some point in time. And so, the question, and it came up on Monday evening, is when is the request going to stop? And I wanted to say something, but I didn't.
Well, your budget still remains below the level of what you had to spend for this school system in 2008. I think that's really important for people to understand.
Absolutely.
Well, the math used by some people is very strange, listening to the conversations. So, it's going to be a challenge, and the fact that it's in a reoccurring line item is certainly something we have to take into consideration.
Well, I believe Ms. Blackburn just stated, the math is very simple. You take the figures from 2008 and the figures from now, and you see how much we've had to cut and how much it takes to still run a school district. You know, needs base, it's bare bones, you know. So I don't know how fuzzy or how difficult the math can be. The bottom line is, we've cut, 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 and at some point, you have to start putting back or you end up with nothing. Or with a program that's below par to be able to educate our children.
I don't disagree with you.
To those standards. So, but I do appreciate, and I want to thank the supervisors for what they have done for the school system. They continuously step up when we need them to, and it is greatly appreciated because the things that the superintendent is proposing to put back into the budget, it is, it was needed before and it's needed even more so as the years go on. I do have a question concerning the assistant principals at the middle school. So you're still recommending to cut?
No.
No, okay.
I'm not recommending to cut anything except for the things that are on line five, six, and the cost avoidance that's on line seven. There are no other cuts recommended in this budget.
And I also want to thank the board of supervisors. I'm really grateful, and I'm sorry I couldn't be at the meeting, but I'm really grateful for their commitment to our public school children. And I'm also grateful to you, Ms. Blackburn, for restoring the position of the staffing for the in-school suspension program at the middle school. I just am very, very happy to see that come about because I know our teachers will be appreciative of it.
So at what school is that one position? How's that going to work?
Well, Mr. Simpkins will work with the schools to work out a schedule. But my feeling when I put it back in here is that you have two middle schools that have over 800 kids in them. And that they probably have really suffered with having just a three-day or a two-day ISS. So my first consideration was to look at the needs of the two largest ones and then to see if there were some way that we could flex that position at all to add any assistance to the two smaller ones. But the two smaller middle schools have 300 students.
Right.
And there's a lot of difference between the number of kids that you have with disciplinary incidence in a school of 800 versus a school of 300. Just the sheer numbers are very different. So my focus was the two large ones.
Thank you very much.
One question I have, and this came up Monday in the discussion, and our initial request related to the middle school scheduling was a $1.191 million reduction. And now, the reduction is at 900,000. Can we, can you elaborate how the change occurred there?
Well, we had to start out by making some assumptions about what the schedule would look like. And, you know, you make assumptions and then you test your model. And when you test your model, the assumptions don't always turn out to be 100% correct. And so, when you're moving that number of positions in a school district, quite frankly, I thought it was a pretty good guess to go from 19.6 to 15 when you actually, I mean, the schools are pretty much scheduled, positions are in place, we've got kids in seats, and so we now know that we can pull out that many positions and take it to the bank.
So the initial thing was that a, between you and the staff, you thought that...
It's an estimate.
It was an estimate of about 19 positions, but after you finally went back through and implemented it, it's actually a little less, okay?
Yes.
I agree with Ms. Franklin. I'm pleased that the board of supervisors stood up for education and realized that we're at the bone. Secondly, I really think that what you've done here, the superintendent, is to put more people in front of students. The modification schedule, the addition of the athletic directors, which will free up the assistant principals, the... the assistant principals, the math coaches, and so on, have given us a great opportunity to put a teacher in front of students more often than it would in the past schedule. And I think that's crucial. I think that the more times that we can have teachers in front of students teaching, teachers in front of students coaching and so on, I think it's gonna help alleviate a lot of problems, and I really think the schedule identifies that. Thank you.
I'm also very pleased with how you presented the budget to us. Thank you for creating this chart. It helps to show the history of what we've been through this last year, 'cause it is confusing, I think, at times to look at all the different versions we've had. And I'm pleased, what this doesn't have highlighting is that we, all of our employees are getting a two percent raise.
That's right.
And I think that's very exciting.
And the four percent VRS. We're really excited to be able to accomplish that.
Yes. So I thank the Board of Supervisors for all their work and Ms. Blackburn and her staff to get us to this point. And I'm hopeful that growth in our county will allow us to have these additional items again next year, plus a lot more. I think that there's definitely that opportunity that that could happen. So there's always hope.
Board members, any other comments, questions? Because at this point, we, bear with me just a second. Hearing no other questions, our next agenda item would be to adopt this budget.
May I just ask one more question?
Sure.
It, it's just a clarification. Explain to me the nurse situation, please. I'm a little bit...
I didn't do anything with the nurses. I left the nurses on line, they're over here on line, let me see if I can get mine to focus. It's on, um, line four of the page titled Possible Budget Reduction Options. And all it says in there is that as positions that have extended-year supplements added to them become vacant, we will review them to see if the number of days that are currently attached to the position are necessary.
So if we...
So, so we haven't reduced, I'm sorry.
I haven't reduced a single person.
That's, that's great.
So good. The people that are currently in those situations where they're getting an extended-day supplement are gonna continue to get those?
Every single person.
Okay.
And in, in talking with, with nurses, I know they are very pleased because they do need a lot of extra days to do the work they have to do, so I'm really happy that you did that.
And I would like to also thank the Board of Supervisors for stepping up. They, they, it's difficult. It's a difficult conversation. I attended Monday evening because it kind of was on their agenda pretty quick, and at the encouragement of their board chair that to make sure we had, it was a board request, it was our request to them, so it's appropriate for, for me to be present and was able to answer questions, and I believe that, that, um, we went into the meeting, I don't believe with four votes, but we ended up with four votes as the meeting progressed.
Thanks, Wendy.
So I think it, we were able to get that extra funds, and it's the right thing to do because, as you know, I've been stating, we've gotta get capital out of our budget.
Yeah.
And I thought, and I made this statement on Monday evening, we have to have three budgets, in my opinion. We have to have an operating budget, we have to have a capital budget, and we have to have a school nutrition budget, and we approve all three of those. Capital budget is something that we have got to start working with the Board of Supervisors on, and I, that is gaining momentum, and that's gaining esteem by number of the Board of Supervisors. Because quite honestly, the capital piece of this is just as equally important to them as it is us, because they're just turning over buildings that they have built to us and asking us to take care of them. Well, they've gotta help us take care of them. You know, they're, they're just as much their buildings as they are the school, school division's building. So I, I think we're making some headway there and was pleased with the outcome. It, it took a while to get to the outcome there Monday evening, but we finally got there.
Well, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead. You know, they take a lot of heat from the citizens because our budget is the largest portion of allocation that they do. And a lot of folks don't understand, if we don't educate our children, if, I was able to see just a portion of the news today talking about the growth in the industrial center or whatever it's called down by Falling Branch. And if we're not providing, you know, the resources through our children to be able to take care of those jobs, you know, they won't come. So it, it, it works both ways, you know? If you don't educate the children, if you don't show that you have some stability in your school system, then, you know, what did we hear when we were trying to figure out what we were gonna do at Blacksburg High School? Okay? Repeatedly, over and over and over again. That's what we heard. So if you don't invest in public education, you know, it, it will eventually catch up with you.
Oh, absolutely.
So I, I'm ready to bite the bullet when my tax notice comes out and my personal property comes up, and, you know, I'll eat more peanut butter. It's that simple, you know? And beans and, beans and whatever, yeah, that car's gone for a long, long time, you know?
What you're, what you're saying is very true. The, the community that is educated has, um, less crime, um, less unemployment, and it's a happier community. So what you're saying is exactly true. And, and this Montgomery County community is headed in that direction.
Next item on our agenda is adoption of the public hearing, uh, budget, I'm sorry, the adoption of the budget for the public hearing. And this is for the action, and just a point of clarification, Mr. Drake, we, when we approve this, we're also approving the school nutrition budget, right?
We have to.
Okay. I just want to point that out. So when we approve the budget, we're approving both the operational and the school nutrition budget at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. For the public hearing. Correct. Okay.
I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget for the purpose of the public hearing to be held on April twenty-ninth.
Second.
Any further discussion on our budget?
The only thing I was gonna mention, in case you guys didn't know, is the school nutrition budget has a ten cent increase, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just for the record, it's a ten cent increase.
Okay. Since this is for budget, I'm gonna ask for roll call, please, on that.
Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Box?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Leave the motion carried. Next item on our agenda, thank you, board members. Next item on our agenda is the upcoming school board members. We will be back here on Monday, April the twenty-ninth at seven PM for a public hearing on the FY fourteen operating budget. And then the next meeting after that is on the seventh, is our first regular meeting in May. And then you see the rest of the meetings for you. With that, I seek a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
He'll lose in favor, signify by staying aye. Any opposed? We adjourn.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you.